Do you want to try again, Margot?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Julianne and I have been chatting back and forth trying to figure out what was going wrong on our end. And so glad, glad to know that it's all figured out. So. Let me. Since we were focused on trying to figure out what was going on, let me pull up the presentation that we have for everybody. All right, how's that looking? Good, okay. Well, thanks, everybody for having us here. My name is Margot. I'm a cultural resources principal. And with me is Julianne. We're both architectural historians with Rincon. You've, we couldn't hear the introduction, so I'm not sure what, what you've been told about us. But you're probably aware that we have a new on-call contract with the city to provide preservation planning services. And we were brought on late last year to help. With, to help after the city historian and manager retired. So today. We look forward to introducing our team, our capabilities, our scope of work and some project examples. And then happy to answer any questions that you might have about us. So this is our team. We have about nine architectural historians. We're all Secretary of Interior professionally qualified in history and architectural history. And basically that means that we have combined education and work experience. We all have higher education degrees in history or a closely related field and many years of work experience. We, it's going to be mainly Julianne and I working on this contract. We have a lot of experience in the area as architectural historians. But we have these other seven available depending on what type of projects or tasks come up and what kind of specialties they might need. We also have a large archaeology team. About forty people that are available to the city. And the city has been working with one of our archaeologists on some consultation guidance. So that's just a brief overview of the team. I'll go ahead and pass it off to Julianne to talk about our capabilities.
Thanks, Margot. As Margot stated, we have a cultural resources team of over. I think we're up to about fifty full-time staff that includes architectural historians, archaeologists, and we also have support from paleontologists we needed. We work on every aspect of cultural resources work from identification to mitigation. Some examples of our work include Mills Act Program Administration assistance. We have worked both on the client side, helping homeowners apply for Mills Act programs in cities like Laguna Beach. And we've also worked on the city side of its extension of staff for the city of Santa Ana to review those applications. We prepare Secretary of Interior Standard Design Review and Certificate of Appropriateness. We have worked on reviewing changes to historic buildings for their conformance of the standards on the applicant side. As well as on city staff side, similar to what we've done for the city of San Juan Batista for the project at four one one, the Alameda. We conduct peer reviews, which include reviews of other consultant work to ensure that they meet best practices and procedures. And we do project impact analysis and review other consultant work for project impact analysis. We prepare local landmark designations. We fulfill agency staffing, which we will show some project examples of that work a little bit later in tonight's presentation. We develop historic context and evaluation methodology. We've done very large scale projects in places like Santa Clara County Parks. We recently underwent a huge context development and which included evaluation for, I think, twenty-two park properties. We provide training for staff, which we've done for the city of Elk Grove recently. We prepare grant writing services, which includes both identifying grants and preparing the materials. We recently did that for the city of Sacramento. And we do historic resource surveys, that's pretty standard work for us, and public outreach and engagement with workshops and outreach materials. We're currently helping the city of San Mateo both update the historic preservation ordinance and prepare a historic context statement for which they've never had one. And part of that, we're doing a really robust public outreach. And engagement process with our in-house team. Other capabilities we have, again, like I was just saying, ordinance development and updates, historic tax credit applications. I currently have two under review right now with National Park Service. We do environmental document sections to support all secret documentation, including, you know, CE's up to EIR's. And we also do Section 106 compliance reports, which is the federal threshold for review. We do agency consultation. A lot of time that happens in the purview of Section 106 projects. We prepare agreement documents like MOUs and conditions of approval, things like that, maintenance plans. MMRP development implementation. We recently helped the city of San Luis Obispo. Prepare some MMRP documentations and that included actually archaeological monitoring plan. Oral history interviews. We do interpretive products. We're right now working on an interpretive display for Anderson Dam in Santa Clara County. And we do design guidelines. So really, if you can think about any kind of historic resources work, we've done it and we continue to do it. I think now I will pass it off to Margot to give some examples of some of the work that I've just described.
Yeah, actually, next on the slideshow is our current scope of work for this contract. And it's pretty broad. We're just happy to help and wherever the city needs help. Julianne has been diligently reviewing preservation policies that the city has currently and is looking into. Some good potential next projects and which she can talk about a little bit more. We're scoped to do grant writing services, just in case the city decides that they want to apply for grants, the standards analysis. The design review process that the city needs the most help on. And that's what the picture is to the, to the left here is a design review project. That was completed for a repainting project. A peer review, local register evaluations, providing training in whatever the city could require training on. And then providing support to this board. Julianne, do you want to talk a little bit about the reservation policy review that you've been up to?
Yeah, sorry, I realize I passed it off to you, but prematurely there. Yeah, we've begun looking at your current ordinance and how it operates. And we've talked to both Ilse and Erica about how that is working for them now and what the challenges and deficiencies are kind of with administering the program as it exists. So we've also had some experience working with it, with assisting with some of the reviews we've done so far. So we've prepared some information and recommendations on things that might help the program operate a little bit more smoothly and effectively than it currently does. We've also discussed potential updates to your historic context statement. And we've been working with your planning team currently has a standing meeting with your tribal, local tribes. And so we've been working to facilitate improving that relationship. Our archaeologist Hannah Haas, who has about twenty years' experience in the area and is actually from the area, has been working to. Prepare some conditions, standard conditions of approval that might help with project review in terms of archaeology. So those have been our first orders of business. We've also been helping prepare your CL, your annual CLG report, which is underway. And I think our next steps, things that we've been discussing is preparing a study session with both your commission and city council to talk about some of these things and some potential priorities for future work. The, the one thing about San Juan Batista is that you, you have an incredible amount of resources and you've done a lot of great work at identifying those resources. And you have all of the kind of infrastructure in place, but it's gotten a little bit. Confused over time, just with adding and adding and adding to it. So it's all there. It just kind of needs to be revised and cleaned up. So hopefully we can offer some support and some advice on how to do that.
So some examples of other agencies that we've helped with all of this stuff before. The city of Santa Ana, we provide on-call agency staffing services. We had an individual working with the city last year. Still do have an individual working with the city. Nearly full-time, working at the city offices as well as virtually. And they did everything from site visits, some local register evaluations, provided commission support, writing staff reports. Doing those peer reviews and design reviews according to the standards. Working with applicants to prepare their Mills Act applications and certificates of appropriateness. They did every type of research that could help move their preservation planning program along, such as reviewing plaque ordinances and coming up with plaque programs. And, and researching ordinances and, and how the city might want to update their ordinance. Basically, anything that. You could do with preservation kind of happened over the course of that, that project, and we still do. Another example is the city of Elk Grove. We have an on-call. I've worked with the city for about nine years. And I have done everything from historic context statements and surveys and grant applications to training and evaluations and peer reviews and certificates of appropriateness. Committee support, working as liaison between the city and the committee. Public outreach. And then one interesting project that we just wrapped up a couple of months ago was for their first listing of about fifty resources to their local register. And that was a really special project. It's close to my heart just because I was. The community was unfamiliar with what listing resources meant. And so there was a public engagement strategy that was developed, materials that were developed describing, you know, what the process is. And the pros and cons of having a listed resource and just general information about how it could impact those property owners. And then these, these engagement events, which is the picture here on the left, it was a really well-attended and really fun community to, to work with.
And Rincon's had an on-call contract with the city of Berkeley for their planning services since about, I think, twenty fourteen. So in the course of that work, we've prepared a lot of historic resource evaluations and project impact analyses. And become very familiar with working with their local register requirements. Recently, their preservation planner has planned her retirement. And so they've brought us on to augment city staff for their supporting the Historic Landmarks Commission work. Part of that has included preparing landmark nomination staff reports, preparing. Certificate of Appropriateness reports, peer reviewing applicant submitted documents. And attending and. Running kind of their landmarks preservation commission meetings. We continue to provide preservation planning support, including helping them out with. The appeals process. There's several appeals in the work right now, which will go to city council, which we're helping them navigate both the preparation documents and the presentation to city council. So that's a longstanding relationship that we continue to work on for, for over a decade now.
So that kind of wraps it up for us. Thanks for letting us present about what we're all about. And we're just really excited to work with the city on the preservation planning efforts. Do you have any questions for us?
Any board members with questions for the team? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Elise Prantnall, and I will be presenting later this evening on a topic of grants. And I was just wondering if you guys were planning on staying on a little bit longer on the, for the meeting. Because I believe you can probably add some valuable insight into what we're going to be discussing.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll stay on.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, where are you guys located?
I am located in the Sacramento area.
And I'm based in our Oakland office and I live in San Mateo County.
You said Oakland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious, you know, I deal with a lot of folks back east and so time, time changes, time differences get in the way. What's a CLG report?
CLG stands for Certified Local Government, which the city is.
Okay, and Certificate of Appropriateness. I've not heard of that before.
Yeah, I can take this one. Yeah. So it's similar to what your city process is for permitting, where you have requirements that if something is a designated resource, if the owner plans to make changes, it has to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. Many places have something similar to that and they often review those projects and require a certificate of appropriateness to approve work. So sometimes it has to meet the standards and design guidelines, which, which you also have.
Got it. And so you guys are, you're doing our historic design review work?
Yeah, for, for helping your planning department through some of your permitting requirements. We have been doing reviews of existing evaluations and in some cases, preparing evaluations as required by your code. And just kind of ad hoc questions that we can help planning department answer. Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's you guys would refer them for the, for the historic designer review process. It, it now is the site plan and design review. Is it an either or between a site plan and design review and a historic design review? Or are they two separate things? And, and would someone have to then do both potentially?
It depends on the project and what's being proposed. We go based off of the historic, or historic preservation code to see what applies and what steps need to be taken. And it's also based on the status designation of, of the property based off of the DPR, Department of Parks and Rec.
The Department of Parks, I'm sorry, the what? Department of Parks and Rec? Is that a city thing or is that a?
No, it's a state. Yeah, and I think Julianne can provide a little bit more clarity on that.
I can help that. So the way that your code section is written for historic preservation, it's based on the results of your two previous survey efforts. The two, the nineteen eighty-four survey, I think, and the two thousand six survey. As a result of that survey, Department of Park and Recreation forms were, were prepared for properties. And that's just a recording device. It's, it's just a form, basically DPR form, which describes the property and its existing conditions. Some of those. Part of what happens when you document a property and you prepare an evaluation is that a status code is assigned. And so the way that the San Juan Batista code is written is that it says like if it's code one through five, if that's code one through five. It means it's been recognized as a historical resource. And so it is treated as a historical resource in the code. And anything that received a six or a seven status code as a result of that survey is, well, six is not a resource and seven is it needs to be evaluated for a resource. And I'm not sure I clarified anything for you.
No, no, absolutely. That helps. Thank you so much. And that, so that's a, and that listing resides with the city, that, that documentation resides with the city. So we, we control that. And then, so then if it's somebody, if a property is a seven, then it would be come to you guys for evaluation. Is that the, that's the process? Yeah, so it would ring on for, for, to, for determination.
Yeah, so the way that the, so a seven means that it has not been evaluated previously, but it has been recognized or it's been recorded as being over forty-five years old, which is generally the threshold recommended for recording and evaluating resources. So that has been the role that we've played recently for a project in the city. There was a seven that we looked at and we did an evaluation for.
Yeah, and I'm, I am, it's my house, just before you guys were, were engaged, the previous. I went through the process because I had the roof replaced on my house. My house is more than a hundred years old. But unfortunately, the, it was remodeled in the nineteen sixties and they completely destroyed all the really historic character of the house. So it was deemed not historic, but it did, it needed to go through that designation. And I think that's, that's where we've been having some, some confusion is whether, looking at that code, because there's no information on our website that talks about any of this. And so it's, it's, it's just confusing. I know it's confusing for me, but I went through the process. But I fortunately, I, my background here in the city, I got the, the, I got, I got, it got dealt with pretty, pretty expeditiously, thankfully. It worked out fine. But it, it was, anyway, so I just, clarity helps. So those, that, you guys are replacing, I forget what her name was, the, the woman, Meg, Meg. She did the evaluation of my house. And so you guys are replacing her, her in all those functions. But and obviously have a lot more bench depth and broader capabilities than, than what she was able to. Okay. That is all the questions I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other board members with questions?
Hi, I'm Andy Sanchez. A quick question, just going through what you presented today. Simple question was, do we have a timeline in which we're looking at these evaluations, right? So the first one was, well, was mentioned was nineteen eighty-four. The next one was two thousand six service, right?
Survey.
Survey, I'm sorry, apologize. Survey. So, right, so I mean, is it, is it every twenty-two years that we're looking at or when will the next one be coming up?
So we're not currently engaged to do a survey update. If that were a priority of the city, it's something that we could look at. But as I mentioned in my presentation, you know, San Juan Batista is pretty small and you've done a really good job of already looking at your existing building stock. And so you already have a lot of information. I think it goes to more of what we were discussing just now is that. How that is distributed to the public so they understand how, how the process works. So it's, it's not so confusing. So we've been talking with Ilse and Erica. we've been talking with Ilse and Erica about some of the city's priorities. And for now, we've identified that just helping the program run a little bit more smoothly than it currently does is probably our first priority. One of which comes from the code being a little bit more complicated than it needs to be. And so our hope is to give some advice on how to improve that, because you don't really need to do much more information gathering at this point, that that a lot of that has been done. Now it's just about how to use that information to run your program effectively. So survey work for now will probably be limited to those one-off evaluations that need to be done for buildings that have become age-eligible since they were last looked at in 2006. So that that's a smaller number of buildings than than had been previously about or surveyed, rather.
Any other board member?
Yes, good evening, Rincon. Dan DeVries here. I just want to say welcome to San Juan Batista. We are very glad that you're here. Chris Marana mentioned your depth and your experience and so forth, and we're well aware of your your reputation precedes you. So welcome. And now that you're here, my question is whether you've had an opportunity yet or will in the future, near future, try to segue into some existing historic preservation efforts. Specifically, I'm looking at Vanda Guebert right now. She's the director of the San Juan Historical Society. They are a formidable organization that has been around since when? When when did the? 1965. Maybe got a mailing list that you wouldn't believe. Everyone is very interested and enthusiastic about preservation of history in San Juan, as Vanna can tell you. They are also a treasure trove of information with their luck library, archives, photos, documents. It's just unbelievable what they have available to you folks at Rincon when you do a deep dive on some of these issues. So if you haven't met Vanda yet, I hope that you will. Yeah, there's no camera on you, unfortunately. Maybe are you going to say something in a minute at the you are? Okay, great. And then the next question was, so that's the historical society. The next question was, to what extent, if any, have you had any opportunity? Or will there be one for you to segue with Meg Clovis, who was mentioned earlier? Because I think she had may have had some things underway or may have some institutional knowledge. I think that Rincon may benefit from getting a download from or from her. I'm looking at Ilse now. What do you think, Ilse? Is that gonna? Can you get Meg's? Can you do a download for Meg's brain into them?
I think that information or Meg's information was shared with Rincon, if I'm not mistaken, when they first started. But yeah, I'll connect them and see, you know, where where we can go from there. I'm not too sure if Meg is still around to help with that, but we can.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm glad you brought that up, because I actually had coffee with her before the holidays, when this was all, you know, her on her her she has to take care of her mother, and it was kind of the die was cast. So I said, well, will you be available? I think Rincon, if they were not already selected at that time, where it was looking like it was going to go that direction. So she said absolutely that she could make herself available for questions, inquiries, whatever, firm and con. And she's, I think Vanda will agree, she's a great resource for us if she's so gracious to allow herself to to give us some time and energy. So that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Frontal.
Thank you. I did have one more question, and it's two parts. The first is you you went over everything that you're capable of doing, which was a wonderful list. My question may be more for staff. What exactly is it that you are doing for the city of San Juan Batista so that we can be clear on what we our expectations as a committee are of you and and of the staff, really, is my question.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, well, Rincon just started in December, January, technically, that was like their start time. I started in November, so we're still trying to essentially clean up the process. But as Julian mentioned, as code cases come in for on historic properties, one of the priorities for the city is to get that historic evaluation and or impact report completed to help streamline that process. So Rincon has been really helpful in ensuring that we get those historical evaluations or reports done in a in a timely manner to facilitate a smoother permit processing on our end. So so far, I think they've done quite a few, like three or four. So that's so far on the top of the list. As I mentioned, we are trying to clean up a lot of things. Cleaning up the ordinance is another one, and also making sure that we're able to connect the services to where the need is is essential. So we're still, you know, getting those things coordinated, but that is a great question, and thank you for bringing it up. So right now, the main focus has been those historical resource evaluations that come in for for permit processing.
Okay, I just want to be make sure that I'm I understand perfectly. So in the future, if there were a reason for the city of San Juan Batista to need to write a grant, for example, that is not covered under our current contract? Is that correct?
We we I'll pipe up if that's okay. We can absolutely provide those services. Basically, our contract is an on-call contract. So whatever regarding any tasks regarding preservation, planning, historic resources services, if it was a grant for something related to preservation, planning, historic resources services, then we could definitely help with that. That was something that the city requested us to do.
Yes, so that's another thing. Yeah, just another thing to be mindful of. We are, we do have a budget with them, and we do want to be very conscious of how we're spending those funds. No problem. Thank you.
Any other board members?
I apologize, but I do I have a follow-up question. I I it occurred to me after the fact. In those evaluations and those property evaluations for the inclusion on the historic resource, do your evaluations require a an onsite visit when you do those valuations? Is that a requirement of your process? Or the process, I should say.
So for now, Ilse has been able to provide that information to us by getting us current field photos, and we're able to work from those. So for most of the projects that have come to us, that's been sufficient because they've been rather simple. If it were a more complicated project, I would probably come and do the site visit myself.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That that was one of the things that I experienced is that they was they she required a site visit, which significantly increased the cost. You know, and for you guys being outside the area, that would be a consideration. So that's that's what made me think of it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions that came up, but a few of them have been answered. I was wondering what types of service you provide, not not the services that you listed, but are we on call, full contract? But you said on call. So only when we call you do we get charged? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then so financially, what's the obligation and budget structure for them? Is it an annual or is it ongoing? Are we looking to phase out? So for example, one of your projects, you said you've been with them for 10 years. I think it was Berkeley. Berkeley, you've been okay, Outgrow for 10 years. What are we anticipating with regards to the work here in San Juan Batista?
Right now, our contract is for a year and with the option to update or extend as many times as as the city wishes.
What? Oh, oh, okay, okay. So because you've just gotten started and you kind of said who determines the projects, and that is, excuse me, the city and with the help of our city planner. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And yes, your presentation was impressive with the services that you can provide, and we're hoping, as Dan had said, that you will use the resources that we have here in town with our historic society. So thank you. At this time, at this time, are there any public comments, Zoom or chambers?
Thank you. I'm Vanda Guebert. I'm president of the Historical Society, and I want to reiterate what a great presentation that was and how pleased we are to to see a company like this onboard with us. I have a question. I know there's a lot of boilerplate language. I saw the term local register evaluations. You've probably noticed that we don't really have a register. We have the 1981 and 2005, 2006 resource inventories. The 1981 inventory was really very well done. It's very robust, a lot more detailed than the 2005, 2006. The Historic Society has copies of both, paper copies and digital copies. And the city, well, that's my next question, but I, when I first moved to town in 2005, the city had just gotten had just become a CLG and had just gotten a CLG grant. And that's how we got to do the historic resource inventory in 2005. And it required matching manpower. So the city needed volunteers, and I had just moved to town. I loved history, so I started to volunteer. And then then became a Historic Society member, then got on the Planning Commission Historic Resources Board for 10 years. But my question to Rincon is, do you have access to the 1981 and the 2005 inventories?
Yes, the city's provided copies of both those to us. We don't have copies of all the DPR forms, but as projects come up, Ilse has been able to provide the appropriate DPR.
Okay. Good. That's it. Thank you.
At this time, do any board members have comments that they'd like to make regarding the presentation or any of the questions that were answered? No? Okay, so this is a non-action or no-action item, so we are going to proceed to the Historical Society presentation. Ilse?
Yes, thank you. So as part of our talks from the previous HRV meeting, there was a request to have an introduction of the Historical Society. So we do have Vonda here from the Historical Society to give us an introduction to us all. So I'll go ahead and pass it over to Vonda.
Okay, thank you again, Vanda Guebert. My name is spelled Wanda. It's Polish, but pronounced with a V. So when you see my name, it doesn't look anything like what it sounds like. Yeah. That's okay. The Historical Society began as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in 1965, which is 60 years ago. And there were 61 charter members. We have 85 members now, many of whom are descendants of the original charter chartered members. And we were in various locations. We started off in the Texas Lodge down the street in the library, and they had a library then. And then we moved to the back of the library, and then we moved into the Luck Museum in 2001, where we we where we reside. The building belongs to the city, but we, the archives are in the museum. I'll tell you what our archives include, although, Dan, you did a great job mentioning it. We've got thousands of vintage photos, print and digital, an incredible array. Because we were founded so many years ago, there were still members of pioneer families living with their old family photos. So they gave them all to us. And so we've got a rich collection of photographs. And I'm going to jump ahead. Every month I do a then and now article in the Mission Village Voice, and that's been going on for 10 years now. That's 120 articles on a building then and a building now. So I use the then photos from our archives. And I use, we have a complete set of 51 years of the San Juan Mission News, starting from 1918 to 1969. So that's a rich array of history as well. As I said, we have the historic resource inventory documents from 1981 and 2005. We, because the city has been, the city staff changes so frequently now where it didn't used to. We are a bit like the institutional memory of the city. We we get a lot of calls from city staff, from Meg Clovis, used to work with us. Individuals call us, want to know about their family history or their houses. So we we are not open all the time. We are open by appointment. We do have an open house usually in October. We have historic maps and documents. We have the Ehrenberg maps, which were the very early maps that are in Spanish. The street names are all in Spanish and I have a hard time with that one. And we have the Sanborn Fire Maps from 1908 and 1926, which are really a good resource, because you can see what buildings were in place and at what time and the, yeah, they're a good resource. We also have the Milken Papers. The Milken was a researcher. He was actually a postman, but he became so interested in history that he became a historian, and he interviewed Estelano Alarios. I guess around the turn of the century, maybe the 20s, who we count, who was a his Alarios was a big name in San Juan. He donated cemetery. And so there's a lot of pioneer history that we have. We have history, we have information about the two nationally registered historic districts and another not not registered, and the various historic buildings on the National Register of Historic Places. We were involved in the getting the Third Street onto the National Register of Historic Places. I don't remember what year that was, 2010, maybe. We have a lot of material on the Fiesta de O festivities, the pageant plays, schools, organizations, and we have the Past Perfect Management Software System. So we digitized a lot of our photos, not all of them, and then got them onto the Past Perfect system where we included text. Ultimately, the goal was to get it online, but our technology guru is not working with us anymore. So that's kind of at a standstill. One of our board members has been a member from the beginning. And and but ironically, none of us are native San Juanders. We all came here from somewhere else, just with an interest in history. And we all sit on other boards. So for example, I'm on the Mission Village Voice Board. I'm also on the Spirit of San Juan Board, representing heritage tourism. So we're all we're all busy. Okay, I'll tell you what the purpose, the founding charter member stated purpose. The specific and primary purposes of the San Juan Batista Historical Society are to discover, procure, and preserve whatever may relate to the natural, civil, ecclesiastical, and architectural history of San Juan Batista, to establish and maintain collections of photographs, information, and memorabilia of every kind relating to the city of San Juan Batista, to arouse interest and appreciation in the historical heritage of San Juan Batista, and to compile and publish books related to the history of said. So we have either published ourselves or been involved with the publication of a number of books. This is one of them. And I've given each of you a copy in case you didn't have one. And we are not selling them anymore, because unfortunately, the binding is not so good. And when you open it, probably the first time, you hear a cracking noise. But it is a great resource. And if you're new to town, I think you'll learn a lot. A lot of the materials, most of the materials came from the Historical Society. What else? We have an active Facebook page. So if you haven't already seen it, I suggest you you look at it. Our board members contribute by participating in city meetings, town halls, and workshops. We, before COVID, we had three meetings a year. And since COVID and since Donius has closed, we, like last year, I think we maybe just had one meeting. It was a big meeting in June. We met at the Mission Farm Barn, and we talked about the Fiesta de O. It was a great, great meeting. You may have seen on on Third Street, we have four Historic Highway 101 signs. We don't, we purchased and donated those because this this was the 101, right down Third Street. The Historical Society deeded the Settlers Cabin at the park at the corner. And we also restored the Jim Jack Cabin that's by the museum. And every year since 2012, we make a recommendation to the we make a recommendation to Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission for National Preservation Month. We typically will select one public building, one private building, and we'll be back next month with our recommendation for, for May. Um, I think that's all. What questions do you have?
Any board members with questions? Board member, Ms. Brentnall?
Thank you. Vanda, I'd like to say thank you very much for the book. I don't have a copy of it. And um, I moved here probably for a similar reason that you did, is that I fell in love with this town when I was in the fourth grade and came here to see the mission. Um, I grew up in Morgan Hill, so it wasn't very far. And um, I absolutely love the history of this town. And I'm so grateful that you guys are here and doing what you're doing. And I hope we as a committee or commission can work with you and do even more to bring out um, the fantastic information that you guys hold that we can share with the public. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member, Board Member Sanchez?
Sorry, no, I got nothing other than thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, Board Member DeVries?
Sure, just a, a few words. I just, this book, this book's been around San Juan for a long, long time. Clo or Clue?
Cloud was what they called it.
This book is very well-known. I would commend it to everyone. There's stuff in here, you could probably come up with six screenplays from movies in here. I'm not kidding, like this guy. Taberkios Vasquez?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you can read that. You, and this happened. This, this isn't like Hollywood making it up. You gotta read some of the stories in here that happened on the streets of this town. It's just really phenomenal. So thank you for gifting that to each one of us. It's really great. And um, I wanted, I, I met with um, Ilse last week, I think, and she told me about how she's going to make a point of attending your meetings. And that just tickled me to death because as you know, Vanda, I've been preaching about how we need to have a, a connection between the Historical Society and the city and now Rincon so that this community benefits from all that you're about, all that you've assembled and collected and categorized and digitized and everything for all these years. It's not going to do any good if it just sits at the Luck Museum. If we, if we can instead benefit from it and that's the way, and that's the pipeline, that's the segue to, to the city and with Rincon too. So looking forward to more of that synergy. It's gonna be great.
I can add, Ilse did come to our last meeting and she asked us what, if we could narrow down what our priorities would be. I think we all agree it would be enforcement. Um, we see a lot of buildings downtown that are in terrible condition, in need of work and repair and um, hopefully we can work together to make that happen.
And then don't be surprised if, if there's a request that you get specific, which building and what, what do you think? No, not now, not now, not now, not now. But you know, that, but just hypothetically, that could be like, okay, which one? And does it need paint? Does it need wood? What does it need? Is it a broken windows? I know you've talked about birds flying in and stuff. So you know, let's get, let's get specific and use you guys as a resource to better the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. Board Member Marterana?
I just, again, uh, would echo the thanks and um, uh, echo Dan's comments about the collaboration. I think there's a great deal of um, of uh, determination by the five of us to, to move things forward and to be more active eh, uh, than, uh, than the Planning Commission and HRB have been in, in recent years.
Thank you. Good.
Okay, um, I'm going to stick with, it was supposed to be a board member questions. So my only question is with the projects that you're doing, where are you finding the funds and how can we be of assistance in that regard?
Thank you for that question. Um, we have a really faithful membership. Um, because we were such a longstanding organization, people remember when they pass away, they gift us money for projects. We have one member.
Legacy money?
Yeah, kind of, yeah. Yeah, one, one member has designated um, a project to recognize the local Japanese community. And, but she wasn't very specific about how that was to be realized. So we're, we have the funding, but we haven't quite figured out how to make it happen. Um, but yeah, we have eighty-five members and membership is fifteen dollars, so that helps. We used to, you know, banking, we had interest, but not so much anymore.
Okay, and then my second question is, the presentation was very well-done. Thank you very much for that. And I'm just in my head thinking, um, besides the events that as a society that you're attending and doing, um, have you ever thought of uh, like the Christmas parade and having a car and saying, look, we're here?
Um, none of us are very, well, I, I personally am not.
I'm just thinking of publicizing better.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, just a question.
Yeah. Um, I forgot to mention too, that we also participated in the Historic Walking Trail. We provided um, photos and text and research and two of our members were quite active in that. And a lot of the things, I know I, I don't come to meetings that much anymore, but I um, would always have to be careful to identify myself, which hat I was wearing. Because some of us, when we come to the, to the mic, everybody assumes they're speaking for the Historical Society. And a lot of us do speak on our own behalf. We, we rarely um, take a position on, on items that we would come to the city for, so.
Okay.
Thank you for asking us, you know, to introduce ourselves and to solicit our collaboration.
Absolutely. Um, are there any public comments Zoom or chambers?
Uh, no speaker card, um, speaker cards received and seeing nobody and no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, now, board members, comments?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and this is a no-action item. So um, now we've got a review and a discussion in, this one is the Historic Preservation Grant with Commissioner Brentnall.
I take a look at what we're going to be reviewing?
Yeah, just disinfect.
Okay. So, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, this commission knows that I am passionate about the historic elements of San Juan Batista and I want to make sure that it is preserved. And as such, I volunteered to do some research on grants that could potentially help the city uh, that we could figure out a way to administer and be successful in the revitalization of our, uh, some of those buildings that you were mentioning, mentioning, Vanda, that um, are a little rundown. So um, the first one I'd like to talk about is the Mills Act and Rincon also briefly mentioned that. Um, the Mills Act is a California state law that enables local governments to enter into contracts with owners of qualified historic properties, offering them uh, property tax reductions in exchange for the preservation and maintenance of their properties. This program is administered at the local level, which means here at the city, and each city or county determines its own criteria and the number of contracts it will allow. When a Mills Act contract is established, the property tax assessment for the historic property is recalculated using an income-based approach, which often results in a lower assessed value and consequently reduce um, reduce property tax revenue. Uh, this reduction directly impacts the revenue of the local government agencies that they receive. But um, what um, the local cities have found, at least in my research, is that you have a greater pride of ownership. Um, you have uh, it, it's, it's a bigger positive than the reduction in the income that comes into the local municipality. The state of California does not provide reimbursement to local government agencies for the loss in property tax revenue resulting from the Mills Act contracts. Uh, local governments voluntarily participate in the Mills Act and accept potential decrease in property tax reves, excuse me, revenue as a trade-off for the benefits of historic preservation, such as cultural enrichment, tourism, and uh, community revitalization. So in short, local government agencies absorb the cost of the reduced property tax revenue when implementing the Mills Act without final, uh, without financial compensation from the state. I have provided you with some information that I pulled off the web on the Mills Act. Um, I think it could greatly, well, let me restate that. I believe that incorporating the Mills Act here in San Juan Batista, Batista, excuse me, could uh, greatly um, have a, a great impact on the historic buildings here in town because there will be no excuse for the land, for the owners of the property not to improve the property or maintain it, uh, because we'd be giving them uh, a reduction in their taxes potentially. With that being said, these um, contracts, I believe you renew them uh, annually. Um, as far as what your expectations are, you can, um, should the city decide to uh, impose penalties for not adhering to the contract? And my understanding is that this lasts for ten years. So this is the first piece um, I wanted to bring forth. There is another one. Um, that is really only the the only state-based grant that I found. The rest are all federal and the majority of them are run through the Natu- uh, National Parks Service. So the next one is the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Program. And again, it's administered by the Park Service and it provides funding to support the rehabilitation of historic properties in rural communities. Eligible ac- uh, applicants include state governments, tribes, certified local governments, and nonprofit organizations. Um, these organizations get the funds and then they sub-grant the funds out to you know, homeowners, property owners, that sort of thing. The maximum grant amount for primary grantees is seven hundred and fifty thousand. It ranges from two hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand and you can get less. The uh, twenty twenty-five application deadline has not actually been defined, but historically, application deadlines um, uh, have been in March. Um, but they haven't proposed anything for twenty twenty-five yet. So we may have a chance for this one if we're interested. And I did provide some uh, information on the Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant Program here as well. The next one is called Save America's Treasures Grant Program. Yeah. Um, I think they all sound pretty good.
Are you, at the end of this reading, say I like this one the best?
Well, I think we can sit, we can discuss them a little bit and I can, yes, yes. Okay. So uh, Save America's Treasures, again, is administered by the National Park Service uh, in partnership with agencies like the National Endowment for Humanities. And they offer funding to preserve nationally significant historic properties. Again, the range here, the minimum is a hundred and twenty-five with a maximum of seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds. Um, the minimum collections projects is twenty-five thousand and a maximum of uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so the difference between a historic property project and a collections project is, let's say, for example, we decided we wanted to do the downtown historic district, that would be a collections project. My suggestion here is to not do a collections project because you get the max amount for both. And once uh, an area has um, been granted an SAT or Save America Treasures Grant, you cannot apply again. So uh, in, in this instance here with this SAT grant program, I think we go after the historic property projects. Again, the application deadline for twenty twenty-five hasn't um, been announced yet, but last year it was in December of twenty twenty-four. And again, I've provided information on Save America's Treasures Grant for review at a later date. The next one is called the Hart Family Fund for Small Towns. And again, um, this is administered by the National Trust for Historic Preservation and it provides financial support to encourage uh, preservation at the local level in small towns across the United States. Grants typically range from two thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand and are awarded for planning activities and educational efforts focused on preservation. So for example, if we wanted to do something specific, we could apply for this grant and um, you know, use Ring, have Rincon do something for us. Um, I tried to provide a variety of different uh, grant opportunities for us to discuss and look at because I think um, it's going to take a, a a lot of money to do what we want to accomplish. So eligible activities are planning, education, and outreach. Criteria is public agencies and nonprofit organizations uh, in towns with a population of ten thousand or less. Um, applicants uh, must be members of the National Trust at the forum or Main Street levels. While membership is not required before applying, it is required prior to the release of funds FYI. So, and then there's a lot more detail here on the Hart Family Fund. Um, and then lastly, here, we've got um, more information on tax benefits of owners of historic properties at the federal level. This really doesn't pertain to us, but um, we were talking about the information that the previous um, organization left us a brochure. This would be the type of information that I think would be great to add because it's a benefit to uh, people owning historic properties. And it's a benefit to, to them to maintain them. And I wasn't sure if Ilse had all of this. Feel free to use it if you don't.
Please, can I, can I drop a footnote here?
Yeah.
What she's referring to is I, when I had that coffee with Meg, she told me that Magda was working on a flyer that could go to homeowners, like, oh, congratulations, you own a historic property. Here's everything you need to know. And then when Elise, Elise, I'm gonna have
I know, it's
And when I was talking with Elise earlier, she mentioned that and she said, this is something we should, you know, think about producing to give to property owners. And I said, well, Magda already has something at least in draft. I don't know, have you, have you seen that? Which, okay, so that's what, that's what um, Elise is talking about is maybe that, some of that stuff can go on there.
Uh, the last uh, packet that I have for you is just um, information on the National, excuse me, I can't speak tonight. The National Trust Grant Application, applicants, um, or the application and the, the type of um, grants that they have. Again, they're, they're not, you know, millions and millions of dollars, but you know, we can make headway ten, fifteen thousand dollars at a time. And as long as we're moving forward, I am willing to put in the work to um, in this case, probably write the grants and work with um, city staff to get the ball rolling should the council decide this is something they want to do. So just a re- quick recap, in my opinion, the Mills Act, I think it's a great idea with our financial situation here in San Juan Batista. I am not sure it's something that the council will be, would be willing to look at at this time. But um, after receiving an email from the chair of the program, um, she told me that the cities that have engaged, and there are a lot of them, um, that they find that it is well worth the loss of revenue. So keep that in mind. I'm on the fence about this one. The Paul Bruin, I absolutely love and I think we should apply for it. Okay? Yes, it does. Save America's Treasures, I say let's go after that one as well. The Hart Family, I think we could, this one is the lowest amount of money if we were looking to you know, maybe do something with the Historic Society in education to bring more awareness to the historic elements of San Juan. I think that might be something that we could use the Hart uh, grant for. So, there you go, guys. Um, I'm open to questions, thoughts, comments. What do you think?
Thank you, Board Member Brentnall. Any member have a question? Let's start with you, Board Member Marterana.
Sure. Well, thank you for all the work. I appreciate this. This is terrific and I look forward to spending some time digging into it. Um, I think I need to do that before I have any real questions, but it's Um, I think I need to do that before I have any real questions, but it's uh, there's a lot of material here. Thank you. Thank you.
Board Member De Vries?
No, I agree with your assessment of uh, I don't know about the Mills Act and the, it being worth it. Rincon probably has some valuable insight on that. Uh, but the Bruin Grant Program and the SAT, I think, yeah, Save America's Treasures. And that fifteen grand from the Hart Family, why not get that if we can? We'll find, we'll find something to do with it. So um, I think this is all terrific and overall, I just want to say thank you, Elise, for doing this. Uh, as I said to you on the phone, I think it's unprecedented that a Historic Resources Board Member would take it upon themselves, donate their own time and energy to looking into this stuff to uplift our community. So thank you.
Board Member Sanchez?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I, I do want to say thank you. That is a lot of work. Um, something I didn't mention before, I used to be a grant uh, writer. But uh, having said that, the question I have right now and maybe I don't want to open a can of worms, but when we're talking about federal funds.
Yes.
And what is happening now with the administration that we are actually missing. Uh, seeing what's going on, it will be a great surprise tonight. And then also focusing on the deadlines, when you're talking about March, we're at March. And as, as we write a grant or if we decide to write for any of this or apply for any of these grants, it does take a while because you do have to do the research and you have to have the uh, documentation that they're requesting for, following procedures, so on and so forth. So it is going to take not only the um, board members, the Historic Society, the, the city manager, city planner, is going to take everyone. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are or the proposal to get together to begin the process.
Chair? Ida? I'm just gonna say Ida.
That's okay.
You aren't kidding. So uh, part of my job is going after grants that I think are beneficial to uh, the business that I run, um, as well as the communities that we serve. Um, so I'm very well-versed in both state and federal grant writing. I will tell you that um, you are dead-on about the timeframe. If we're interested in these, we should start. Um, we really need to make a decision very quickly on what we want to present. And uh, for Dan's example, if uh, you know, he wants to go after that fifteen thousand from the Hart Foundation from the Hart Family, um, we're going to need to come up with a project. So we're gonna have to do some, you know, brainstorming and that sort of thing, other than in a meeting. If we were to do everything in a meeting, we'd never make it. Uh, we're, this would require us to do work um, on the side. And with that being said, I do want to recognize that staff is very, very busy. Um, your presentation at our last meeting was very enlightening and you know, although you would be responsible for ultimately administering, I believe that um, there are enough people here in town that we can get together and do the bulk of the work as far as writing the grant, um, reviewing with you at appropriate times and um, making it through the process in a timely manner. Um, with grants like this, it is um, just keeping at it consistently and making sure that you leave enough time so that you're not scrambling in the end. Um, to your last uh, statement about uh, federal monies, um, that is very near and dear to my heart. And right now, uh, you know, they're, they're not releasing a lot. With that being said, I think the Republican Party as a whole is getting their hands around what exactly has uh, been allocated to spend and where. And I would anticipate sometime this year that they will start releasing those funds again. Do I think it's gonna be in the next couple of months? No. But that's to our advantage at this point because all of these organizations have samples and strict guidelines on what we need to do if we want to apply for one of these grants.
Thank you. So um, are we aware of the RFAS yet, deadline for that? Request for application.
Yeah, um, the um, for all of
Because you've got March and then you've got May.
We said his last, historically, it was March.
Okay.
Um, there are different dates for each grant.
Yeah.
And the answer is no, we do not have the dates yet. Again, to our advantage because we can start working, you know, uh, fairly quickly and um, be ready once they do make that announcement. Because they'll give you generally a month, maybe two months' notice before they close the window. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any public comments? Zoom or chamber?
Hi, Vanda Giber. Thank you for a great presentation. You really did a thorough job and you presented it so concisely and so clearly. Um, we have talked about the Mills Act a lot over the years and I think, as I recall, isn't there a requirement for a paid administrator? Or has that changed?
Uh, I'm not aware of that. No.
All right, thank you.
But that doesn't mean it's not out there. This is just scratching the surface.
Okay, if there are no other public comments, um, how about board, oh, I'm sorry, is there somebody?
Yes, there's somebody on Zoom.
Okay, um, Ms. Karavonk?
Thank you, HRB members. Uh, Karavonk here. And I just wanted to mention that we have gotten certified local government grants from the state of California in the past. The one for the uh, two thousand six inventory and then also our um, downtown National Register Historic District, those were certified local government grants. So as a certified local government, um, you know, the state Historic Office of Historic Preservation, they are usually pretty accommodating if we have something very specific and concrete. So I just wanted to mention that. And then as Vanda mentioned, Mills Act, we have looked at that quite a bit in the past. It's usually most beneficial to people who are new property owners. Because somebody who's held a property for a long time, they're probably already paying very low property taxes. And I believe because it is a contract, uh, somebody, some organization, uh, nonprofit or a city does need to make sure that the contract terms are being met. You know, and I think it's an annual review. So, um, anyway, thank you for being there and I really appreciate your interest in going after some of these grants to help our uh, historic property owners downtown. And by the way, I, I have served on the Historic Resources Board in the past. And I am also on the board of the Historic, uh, uh, now I can't even remember what it is. The Historic, uh, what, Vanda, help me out. Uh, we are the Historical Society. I'm a board member of the Historical Society. I just want to mention that we do meet once a month and uh, everybody is welcome. And if you have something to talk to us about or want to know something, you're most welcome to attend our meetings. They're usually on the second Thursday of the month. Thank you.
Ms. Vonk, before you sign off, um, I do have a question for you. Do you remember what the amount was of the CLG grant that was received?
Uh, we received a fifty thousand dollar one because I did write the grant, I have to admit.
Okay.
And that was for the uh, inventory that we did uh, in. It was done over uh, two thousand five, two thousand six, adopted by the city in two thousand seven. And then the um, we got another fifteen thousand dollar grant. And I think that was for the district, the historic district downtown. And that, you know, was uh, the volun- there's a volunteer component. And so we had to keep track of all of our volunteer hours because that was the ma- part of the matching uh, component of the grants. But uh, the state office has been very helpful to San Juan Batista in the past uh, with these grants. So I'm, and it's been a long time since we've asked them for money, so that might be another source.
All right, thank you so much. Um, excuse me. Next question is for Rincon. Can you comment on any of this with regards to the grants?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll start by addressing um, the Mills Act. Um, your code does allow for you to engage in Mills Act contracts. You just don't have a mechanism set up for that, so just wanted to point out that you're, you have some of the structure in place already if you do want to start a Mills Act program. Um, Cara was right that typically it is used by either new homeowners or people that are doing work that would trigger reassessment. So they're looking to make um, back some of that um, value in the tax savings. Um, and that they, it does require yearly monitoring, which some cities find difficult to keep up with. Some don't do a great job at that, so just the administrative kind of burden of having the program is a reality. Um, as far as the other grants, um, I'm, uh, Margot's actually recently done mu- much more grant work than I have, but um, I think you've identified some really good opportunities with some of these. I think you're gonna have to think about um, projects that you have in mind. Um, because that will be a requirement of putting the application together. So I'm sure that you're familiar with some property owners and things that they want to do. I know that um, there are quite a few that are interested in things like this. So um, that might just be some legwork that's necessary to do in advance of applying for these. I think that's it. Tax, any other tax credit stuff? We can absolutely also help and educate with um, federal ones are a little bit more difficult to use because it has to be um, income-producing. So that will be limited to the type of um, owner that can, that they can use that. But um, the state credit also exists. It was only funded, I think, up to fifty million with a ten million reserved for um, small projects. So that will be expended by basically one project in California. So um, it, because it's the first year it's being administered, that will likely be something that becomes more available in future years as they see the success of the program.
Thank you. Um, any other public comment, board comments? Another hand. Yes, Ms. Vonk?
Okay, I think I'm still on. Um, just, something came to mind uh, in regard to projects. We really need to update our context statement to include uh, the rise of the automobile. Because back in the nineteen, I think it was around the twenties, nineteen twenties or thirties, automobile travel became really big. And I think we, Vanda can correct me, I think we had something like fourteen gas stations in town. And that is something that needs to be included uh, in our context statement. And the other has to do with the warehouses that we have in town because they're very vulnerable uh, to being lost. And so those are two, two things that perhaps we could work on uh, in the planning uh, aspect of these grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, a no action items, so let's move forward to future agenda items. Ms. Ilse?
Thank you. Um, I did put all the future agenda items that we discussed onto a table um, on a PowerPoint. Um, I don't know if we can pull it up. Sorry. But um, I put it as a table for us to reference and see how we are keeping track of those. Um, so it should be slide six. Okay, perfect. Um, so some of the items that we talked about last time was to connect with the Historical Society and Rincon Consultants, um, which was scheduled for today and was conducted. Um, the other one is obtain an overview of Rincon, Rincon Services, Restructure, et cetera, uh, which is also scheduled for today and was conducted. And we had a discussion about grant funding opportunities, which was scheduled today and, and occurred today. But that one can be an ongoing item. And the other um, agenda items that we discussed are listed here. I did highlight the status of projects from the Historic Resources Board on here because I know that isn't something that you all requested. Um, unfortunately for this meeting, I didn't have enough time to put that together. But I do want to let you all know that is on my to-do list for the um, April meeting. So, thank you all for your patience, um, but that will be coming up. But yeah, if, hopefully this helps us um, keep track of the items that we're also completing and discussing. If there are any agenda items that you all want to see in April, um, please let me know and we can um, add that to our list. But if we can keep it to one or two, that would be great because we, we are gonna have um, public hearing um, items coming up in the next couple meetings.
All right, thank you. Um, any board member questions? Saying no questions, public comment, Zoom or chamber?
No speaker cards received and uh, no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Any board member comments? No? Okay, thank you. So, um, thank you. This has been a very good evening of presentations and things that we are looking forward to doing. Again, I just want to compliment everybody for their work, their presence and their frame of mind of where the Historic Resources Board is moving forward or towards um, for the city. And then with the cooperation of not only our staff and our uh, society as well as public, I think that this year is going to be, my new um, mantra is twenty twenty-five is the year to thrive. So
I guess.
So, anyway, um, uh, yeah, okay, twenty twenty-five, the year to thrive. And so we're, we're gonna have a good time. So comment from the Historic Resources Board Member Marterana?
Nothing, Dad, thank you.
Okay, board member Brattonall?
I would just like to ask the other uh, commissioners to please review what I have provided so that we could have a discussion next month. And Elsie, can we please put this on the agenda again for next month? Thank you.
Board Member De Vries? Board Member Sanchez? Okay, uh, my last comment uh, for the evening is Ms. Vonk, as well as Ms. Giber, said and that they do have a monthly meeting. And I had reached out to them and I think the next one is March twentieth at ten o'clock in the morning at Ms. Guardes' home?
At the home of Georgiana Gallardi. It's at the corner of Franklin and Second. And
Okay.
Enter from the Franklin, uh, the Second Street gate.
And so if any of the board members as well as staff can attend uh, to keep moving forward, that would be great. I've slated it on my calendar, so I am looking forward to that. I believe it is a Thursday.
Thirteen?
Twentieth. So uh, just making that announcement, March twentieth, ten o'clock, Ms. Gallardi's home on Second Street. And if there are any other questions on that, I'm sure, Ms. Giber, can we call on you? Yes, thank you very much. And, and that's another thing. This is, as everyone has said, this is a great book. Um, with the rich history of San Juan Batista, it's a good read. It's a good read and then that makes us all better for it. Okay? Um, and then if you have not attended the monthly first Saturday um, reenactment here at the State Park, that would also be a good idea to do. Um, you know, we have tours. Um, how many of you have done the walking tour around? How many of you have done the walking tour around town? The historic tour? There you go. Okay? So there are so many things that we can do to make sure that we're well aware of our responsibilities and how we can assist. Associate Planner Ilse comments?
Thank you, and I do want to thank everyone for their time today, Rincon, Historic Society, board members. I think it was a really great productive meeting. I do just want to remind you all, if everybody attends the meeting, that'll be a good. We don't want to have a quorum at, at the Historical Society meeting. So if you can all, you know, coordinate or tag teammate. Or two at a time.
Good intentions.
If you're going, maybe you can pick one.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you for the reminder. Yes, okay. City Manager Ashley.
Hi, good evening, everyone. No comments from me, thank you.
All right. With that said, the next regular Historic Resources Board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April first. Six o'clock, five o'clock? Six o'clock and it is seven thirty-three. Meeting adjourned. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. There's no vote, right? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
With the with the motion from Board Member DeBries and a second from Board Member Martirana, calling the question for adjournment, Committee Board Member Bretton.
Aye.
Board Member DeBries, Board Member Martirana, Board Member Sanchez, and Chair Pesano.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Looks like they're taking a break. No, they're moving around.
Okay, it is, what time does that red clock say right there?
There was no credit check. My score went up over sixty points and I won my first spot.
That's exciting.
That's a cute dog. Seven thirty-five, let's get going for the Planning Commission by rising and pledging our allegiance to the flag. Eddie, do you want to lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call this, please.
Commissioner Bretton.
Present.
Commissioner Martirana.
Here.
Commissioner Pesano.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
And accounted for.
And Chair DeBries.
Here.
You enjoy saying that.
Each, each month we set aside time to hear from the public on items that will not otherwise be discussed. There's no one in chambers. I don't see anyone on Zoom necessarily. Is there any public comment? Liz, I don't hear anything. Do you?
No chair, no public comment.
Public comments closed. Moving to the consent agenda, we have the affidavit of posting and the minutes of December third and fourth. If there's any thought of pulling one of those things, let it be known.
Correction.
What?
Page two of the February fourth. Consent number five and number four, the motion was not made by.
It was you. Yes, it was you.
All right. So. No, that's. Historic Society is going to have these minutes at Book Library, Chris. They need to be accurate. Okay, so with the, with the correction noted for February fourth minutes, is there a motion to adopt or pass rather the consent agenda with the correction as indicated?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with modifications previously addressed.
Motion by.
Second.
At motion and a second. Can I just do all in favor for these kind of things, please?
I prefer.
Hear that sigh?
I prefer the roll call vote for the members of the public on Zoom.
Okay.
Commissioner Bretton.
Aye.
Commissioner Martirana.
Aye.
Commissioner Pesano.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Aye.
And Chair DeBries.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Figure that out. Okay. Consent is done for A informational items, which is permanent local housing allocation, PLHA and regional early action planning REAP grants. And I assume this is you, Elise Ilse. Told you I was gonna do that. Didn't I say that? I said I'm gonna struggle. I called it. Ilse, what do you have?
So this past month was extremely busy. So I, for item four A, I'm looking to table that item. It's an informational item. I do want to give you all the opportunity to understand what these funds are and give you all the breakdown of what it is, you know, how it applies to San Juan Baptista. And so looking to table it for April.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was the April part?
Table it to April.
Okay.
Table this item.
Do you want a motion to continue it or just, it's not even an action? So you just, we'll, we'll hear from you in April on that. Okay.
See you in April.
See you in April on that. Any, any questions for Ilse on that one? Okay, moving on. Five, review and discuss general plan, annual progress report. Ilse.
Thank you. As previously mentioned, it's been an extremely busy month. We did get the general plan, annual progress report and Housing Element Annual Progress Report completed. However, I do, I am requesting to hopefully host a special meeting on March eleventh for the Planning Commission to review this item. The General Plan Annual Progress Report and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report are due April first to the state. I want to give you all the opportunity to thoroughly review and understand what these progress reports are. And I want to make sure that that information is accurately captured. So I'm requesting to host a special meeting on March eleventh to review both the General Plan Annual Progress Report and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report together.
The dates are conflict for me.
What time in the evening? Six? So you want to do the, do you want to do the scheduling now? Ilse, is that what yours? Does everyone have their calendars on the phone or otherwise? Look at March eleventh. Let's.
I am not. I am, will be attending another meeting. The Cemetery Board meets that night.
Forgot you're on that now.
Does it, do, do we have to meet on a Tuesday night?
It could be a date that works for you.
Instead, the tenth. Would that work?
It works for the rest of the members.
What time are we thinking?
Let's go earlier rather than later.
Three o'clock, four o'clock?
No. I can't do it on Monday? No way. I can do five on Monday.
How long do you think? What's your time budget for this?
Maximum an hour. It's just to review the annual progress report. Make sure you all are aware of what it is, what it contains, and then.
Five to six, Monday to ten?
Yeah, so an hour max. Thank you.
The ten.
Well, question before we, before I commit to anything is, are we gonna have anything to read up beforehand?
Yes, I'll be providing the general plan, annual progress report. I think that's about thirteen, fourteen pages. And the Housing Element Progress Report, I'll, I'll be providing both of them at, both of the reports to you all. As well as a PowerPoint presentation that gives more of a comprehensive overview. That way, you know.
I think Eddie's looking for something in advance. Right, what I'm at, I'm sorry. Friday, can you get it to us by Friday?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does that give you enough time?
Oh.
Thank you. Does that give you enough time, Eddie? Yeah. I mean. Friday works, thank you.
Yeah, I can provide it as soon as I have it together. I have, yeah, I can, I can try to get it.
Maybe not hold everything. Maybe i- if you finish one, transmit it, that might help too.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fine. Well, is there something that we can do to assist you getting it ready?
Yes, City Manager.
I, let me just clarify, the, the agenda and the packet have to get published. So, and we have guidelines for when that happens. And so we, we don't want necessarily get ahead of publishing. So I think we need to hear from the clerk on, once we know, is Monday the, the date that you guys are committing to? Or you still need more information?
Monday, the tenth is on the table unless say otherwise, Liz, does that give you enough time to publish?
Yes, we, we just have to post at least seventy-two hours in advance. So Friday at, if we're meeting at five o'clock, then we have to post the agenda by five o'clock on Monday. But we can certainly, on Friday, sorry, but we can certainly publish it before if it's ready. So if our associate planner has a material ready and she's ready, we can post on Thursday as early as Thursday or whenever she's ready. We just, you know, would like to keep everything posted together.
Commissioner Sanchez, is that work Thursday? If we get it posted in enough time to review all the documents?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
So that'll be the order, as we say, ten o'clock, sorry, March tenth, five PM here, special meeting. Everything to be posted and distributed per the code on Thursday and Friday before. Anything else on that? Ilse?
Nope.
Commissioners, anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes care of A, five A, five B, right? And what about five C? Do you have anything on that, Ilse?
Uh, yes, I have a slide similar to the HRB. These are the agenda items that we all identified at the previous Planning Commission meeting. So we do have the project status of active permits and major projects scheduled for April twenty twenty-five, as well as the overview of the PLHA and REAP grants. So those will be coming your way in, in April. So that's just a heads up.
Great. Commissioner comments? Any public comment on this agenda item five C? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pesano.
I was just wondering, can, is there any way to get the current status of items from twenty twenty-four in April, only because now we're already a quarter in?
Yes. That was an oversight on mine, but yes, I will, I will include that one on there, current status of items from twenty twenty-four.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments? Okay, public comment on this agenda item five C, future agenda topics?
No speaker cards received, didn't see no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Comment is closed. Number six, or agenda six rather. Any final comments from the commissioners, Chris?
Uh, yeah, I was on the city website today and the chair and vice chair for the two boards is not identified. I request that you update the, the city website with that information. Other than that, thank you all.
Yeah, Elise.
No comment, thank you.
I don't.
No comment, thank you.
Eddie? No comment, thank you. Ilse?
Yes, uh, thank you. Two things, going off of Commissioner Martirana. In, in addition to that, if you all have bios and pictures that you can all send over to us, I think Liz has them, so we'll be updating that information. So if you all want an updated picture or updated bio, let us know. And the other thing is, we do have Daniel on the line on Zoom here. He is, um, yeah. He is, um, taking over, um, Erica Frazier's role as the Planning Director for the city. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Daniel to introduce himself.
Uh, hi, Commissioners, Daniel Horchardt from Fourleaf Inc. I'm the Director of Planning for Fourleaf and I'm stepping in for Erica to keep moving things forward. That's about it. Pretty simple task. So I say.
Nice to meet you, Daniel. We look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Ashley, anything? City Manager's report. Comments?
No comments from me, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mirana.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bretton.
Aye.
Commissioner Martirana.
Aye.
Commissioner Pesano.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Aye.
And Chair DeBries.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a great, great rest of your March. We'll see you next Monday night. Awesome work, Elise.